Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Before our official meeting gets started, we have some special guests here this evening that Councilwoman Kubi Diamond will introduce.
Thank you, welcome everybody. I just want to thank Robert Jack and Director Gail Russo from Central Emanuel. And well as the students and parents for taking the time to come and present to us tonight about such an important issue. Last Wednesday night and Thursday, so many in this city, as well as throughout the world, pause to acknowledge and honor the memory of the six million Jews and so many others who were systematically murdered as part of the Holocaust. At a time when there are repeated reports that large numbers of millennials don't understand that the Holocaust took place or acknowledge that it took place, it's important for us of the community to take the opportunity to publicly acknowledge this issue and its importance. So I'm gonna count Robert Jack from Central Emanuel by the microphone as the council of citizens enjoying himself.
Thank you, thank you, Kubi, and thank you to President Ramo and the higher city council for allowing us this opportunity to address the city council and those here this evening. As the councilwoman noted, just a couple of days ago on Thursday, we remembered Yom HaShoa Holocaust Memorial Day. This coming Thursday is Israel Independence Day. These two events are one week apart. It is not a coincidence that these two events were placed close to each other on the祭日 calendar. The message is very clear. It's a universal one. All of us are painfully aware that the most severe and darkest periods in our lives or history are often followed by events that bring joy and gladness. And it's something that we constantly need to remember. To be sure, you can consider the Holocaust and Israel's Independence Day as uniquely Jewish historical events. You could look at it that way. Now, I would urge you to think of those two events in a broader way. As Kubi suggested, six million Jews were indeed murdered at the hands of the Nazis. But five million others were targeted and killed by the same hatred. Lesbians and gays, mentally disabled, physically disabled, socialists, communists, political prisoners, people of color, many others. Hatred knows no names or boundaries. And the establishment of the modest city of Israel in 1948, a country that represents freedom and liberty and democracy, the fact that the people could return to their ancestral homeland is something that could be celebrated by all peoples. So once again, thank you for this opportunity for us to present this very brief presentation about the Holocaust and Israel Independence Day. I ask Gail, our local school director, and her students to go.
Thank you for having us here today to talk about really the most important issues we just...
Last Thursday, Yom HaShoa Holocaust Remembrance Day, we heard a guest be here from the Holocaust Remembrance Talbot Center in downtown New York. Although we heard terrible accounts of the atrocities of the mass murderers that occurred during the Holocaust, we also heard stories of great courage.
We learned about the consequences of inaction and our responsibility to take action when we witness injustice. According to a Holocaust survivor and Nobel Peace Prize winner, Eliot Wusel, "We must always take steps. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormentor. Sometimes we must interfere."
When human lives are in danger, when human dignity is in jeopardy, whenever men or women are persecuted because of their race, religion, or political views, that place at the moment becomes the center of the universe.
We make an emotional transition from sadness to celebration this week as we celebrate Yom HaAtma Umar, Israeli Independence Day.
Seventy years ago, the state of Israel was established under a similar democratic values as the United States. People come to Israel from all over the world with the pursuit of freedom, liberty, and happiness.
Both the United States and Israel are nations made up of immigrants inspired by similar values.
May our desire for liberty, security, equality, and opportunity, the mind has said, "We must never be silent in the face of evil and to always stand up for values and even rights."
So I just want to say how proud I am of these kids for their interest and their desires to tell these stories and to learn about things that are hard to learn about and to share the things that they learned. As I told them that their children won't know survivors, they are really the last generation of children that will have heard of Holocaust survivors. And it's very mature and smart and intelligent kids that are grateful for you and sharing the story. I just want to thank Robert Jack and Gail Russo for coming tonight, and all the students and parents for taking the time to be here to talk about this important issue. Thank you. (Applause)
Good evening. In my long career in the Long Beach Department, I spent many years as the commanding superintendent. In that role, we were very aggressive in DWI enforcement. A great irony is the fact that my name is still under the law of law by a DWI offender, and I still maintain my commitment to ridding the wrongs of long-term drug drivers. I've been very, very fortunate to have four of my staff fighting for this, one in particular fighting so bravely that we, for two years in a row, the police department is the year for Mad. He's been every year for the last number of years, he's been honored. Mad has a policy, once, only one time we get the department of the year, and we've gotten it twice, and only one officer from your department can be nominated for the award. And this year, we had four, and they were all accepted because we have a very, very aggressive program. Last year, we did just under 150 DWI arrests in one and a half square miles of real estate. So these guys are out on the roads, they all work from 10:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning, and we're all safe and asleep, and they keep our roads safe. Our accidents have gone down, but everywhere else in the country, accidents have gone up. We precious, we have heard many times, we have heard many times that DWI is nonstop, unpreventable, it's suicidal, but these four individuals are making a tremendous difference. And as such, an honor of them getting the award from Mad, the city council also wishes to recognize them, and they've been gracious enough to let me make the presentation. Sergeant Nielsen, Sergeant Nielsen.[695.12][695.12](Applause) There is a title, drug recognition act. It takes two weeks of professional training, and then you have to drive to Arizona to the jail in Arizona and test 12 individuals over a week's time, and you have to get all 12 right. You have to decide based on their physiological and physical reactions to things, what category of drug they're on. Sergeant Nielsen is one of, I think, four of Manhattan and maybe one of a dozen in the other states, and he's from Long, the Long Beach Police Department. He also has developed a thing called the Handoff. Because arrest processing takes a great deal of time, and the sergeant, he's the only sergeant that's out on the street when he's working, we don't want to have him have any downtime. So what he does is he prepares a very short bit of paperwork, and then he hands off the arrest from another officer to prepare. The benefit of this is we get him back out on the street. The ancillary benefit or the unintended consequence was that all of the officers that got handed the handoff became more proficient at doing the paperwork, experienced the drug driving, and analyzing what was going on, that they started to take the initiative. And that's how we got to our average of 150 arrests a year for this heinous crime. So on behalf of the city council, and myself, and the city manager, I totally present you this proclamation. (Laughter) We got hard work. (Applause) Nick Rooney? Nick is a second generation rookie. My sixth uncle and I worked lots of many years together, and because I'm old, now I can give it to next generations. So Nick, congratulations.[785.87][785.87](Applause) Next, we have Rocko Walsh. In addition to this, I just want to hear one story of Rocko. Rock, one of our police officers, he was parked, Rocko was around the corner, came up on the scene, observed that the defendant had a firearm on him, went down the gun, attacked the defendant, wrestled with an electric mug, and saved both officers as well as the defendant from any injuries. So I want to be in addition to that, Rocko, thank you very much.[813.12][813.12](Applause) And last but certainly not least, there's also Joe Garafalo, he was doing with the department, he's also a simply overlooked member of our department, and he's very aggressive, he's also one of our motorcycle assist, as is Sergeant Nielsen. Thank you.[818.12][818.12](Applause)
All the way down. You want to sit down? Yeah. You guys, you guys move this way.
You take one step over.
I got it. You're over now. You got it, everybody. Actually, John, can you take one step to the left? That's perfect. Thank you. All right, one, two, three. And we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.[835.12][835.12](Applause)
Congratulations.
All right, as our police officers, let's just hear it first one more time. Thank you, gentlemen.[839.12][839.12](Applause) And now, onto the regular scheduled meeting. Councilwoman Diamond, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'm sorry, thank you, I'm gonna have to sit down. I have to do roll call.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of East City, Long Beach, on Tuesday, April 17, 2018, 7:00 PM. We're on the roll call, Councilman Venda.
President.
Councilman Vanda.
Yeah.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Ramo.
Here.
As the record indicates, the presence of acting city manager, Vice Detective, and Corporation Councilwoman, and now, as we do here.
Councilwoman Diamond, would you please lead us?
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the reward of our standing in my nation, under God, in the visible, the liberty, and justice of our all.
Okay. Thank you again for attending this evening. I guess we will start, like we usually do, with the city managers' update.
Thank you. As a reminder, Phase One of the fully federally funded Army Corps of Engineers Beach Protection Project is complete. A contract is expected to be awarded this month for Phase Two. The Army Corps and the DEC will be hosting the meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, April 18, at 7:00 PM, right here, to discuss the project's next steps. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact Senator Kaminsky's office by 1-6766-8383. This weekend, on Saturday, April 21st, the Luling Parade steps off on from the North East, at 10:00 AM, and marches down West Park Avenue in Kennedy Plaza. A carnival for parade participants and families will be held in Kennedy Plaza, and it really is a very fun event. This Sunday, Earth Day, the city will be hosting Earth Day in Kennedy Plaza, powered by PSNG Long Island. The event will take place from 12 to 3, preceded by the Jellyfish Gamberrine Parade on the Woodwalk Church, the side, starting at 11:00. It will end at Kennedy Plaza. All registered participants in the parade will receive a sand dollar that will be good for discounts to local restaurants and businesses. We hope you join us in thinking globally, impacting locally. For more info, visit longbeachny.com. Earth Day flyers are available tonight. We also have an poetry event. We'll invite you to join the evening of poetry with Nassau County Poultry Theater, Peter Dugan, featuring the Barriac Islands homegrown poet, Long Beach native Harold Michael. Harold is also the owner of Surplus, and he does some very, very interesting sculptures using nuts and bolts and tools, as well as his renowned poetry. The event will take place at Starbucks 101 West Park Avenue on Friday, April 27th, at 7:00 PM. First item of the city is a apology for a bond that is authorized financing for course of separation payments to or for the benefit of the communities of the city's state in the estimated total cost thereof is $2,100,000, incorporated into the amount therefore, and authorized issuance of not to exceed $2,100,000 bonds of sensitive finance and appropriation. Okay.
I have to open the air, right? I open the air.
Okay, very basically, the city of Long Beach has a bunch of different funds. One fund is, there's a sick leave account, there's a personal leave account, there's a compensatory time account, and as such, when employees leave service, they have to be paid out for the money scored them in these various accounts. The city, at times, throughout my entire career, has also allowed people to cash in time at various times throughout their career, whether they have a cash flow problem at home, or the city has the where we draw, and we can pay it off at the current rate rather than the rate that the employee makes when they retire. In my case, the day that I saved from 1978 was worth about 29 cents, which is worth a lot more today. So it would have been much more prudent to pay that off back then than to pay it today. So what this bond encompasses is all the people that separated from service and were obligated, we were obligated to pay this money that they took. Other people were dispaying separation, and they received some money. And then, the third category were some hardships. This money has, the most important thing that I want to know tonight, we can revisit whether or not we like the process, don't like the process, but this money has been spent. Failure to pay us this bond will mean there will be an interruption in payroll, we will not see payroll for the end of the year. So that's the bottom line. If you vote this, if the council votes this down, we will be broke before the end of the year. Ms. Hightower, we want you to come up and expound upon that.
Good evening, Ms. Hightower. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to thank you for allowing the council to talk to you about two weeks ago, I think two weeks ago yesterday, we spoke on a conference call, and you informed us everything about this, allowed us to ask as many questions as we needed to, and avail yourself to any future questions. So I thank you for being here for the public's benefit as well.
Very well done. It's important for everyone to understand, you know, the purpose behind this. And, you know, tagging this with very well. And in a nutshell, you know, the city has contractual obligations to pay people out there, separation pay, that they're due under contracts when they leave. The city has a few options in where the finances, you can have a budget for them, you can borrow for them. For the 2018 fiscal year, the city opted to borrow for it. So in the actual budget that was adopted, you did include separation pay borrowings in order to fund these payments. These payments have amounted to about $2.1 million projected by the end of the fiscal year, so that's exactly what we're putting forward to be authorized today to make sure the city does not have that hole in the budget that year is. At the same time, these payments have been made throughout the year, so the city has fronted it cash, has laid it out before it's getting re-versed, therefore, it's put a strain on the cash flow. So if you don't borrow it by the end of next month, the cash flow situation, the city will be dire.
And these payments have been going down year to year?
Yes, so I believe the one right before I came on board was about $5.2 million, the number was $3.9, it was $3.2 last year, and then it was $3.2 two years ago, $2.4 or $2.45 last year, and then that's a little bit on that show. So they are going down every year. And ideally, hopefully, once they get manageable, the city will have some budget for them and not have to do with them anymore.
And the ramifications, if this doesn't pass?
I do take a look at cash flow, you know, Aaron and I have been watching cash flow because this is the time of year where the city does have the least amount of cash to begin with. Nevertheless, tax payments are charged in February, and there really aren't any more tax fees until mid-July, early August. By my estimations, by the third week in May, which means by the June 1st payroll, the city will not have cash paid for the vendors.
The lack of payment for the vendors, what's the long-term ramifications to that?
Now, you're talking about, you know, the employee's health insurance, which is one about $800,000 a month. You work as a company.
Say that again, how much a month?
About $860,000 a month with your current health insurance, maybe $900 across the fund. You have new workers who are last orders comp payment of $600,000, that's due, so you would still be hospital insurance last year. And then this is also the time that the city's ramping up to get ready for the beach, to get ready for the season, so it would not be a great time for vendors to stop giving an apartment supply of cereal that they need to get ready for the summer.
And you have, from the council, any questions?
Just a point of clarification, you just, it's been said twice in terms of the interruption of payroll, so you're, I just want to make, I just want to be clear on this, that it's not going to happen this week, it's going to happen three weeks from now in May, correct?
Yes, so, so the timeline, so you guys authorize this tonight. There is a 20-day asap offer here, which is subject to commissive referendum, which means that the city cannot sell any debt associated with this authorization for at least 20 businesses. It usually winds up being '23, '24, by the time the court can actually get the notification in the paper, because it's actually from time it's published, not from time it's authorized. Which means that the earliest you can sell this debt is like the middle of May, and then we can close the third week in May. So if it's not authorized today, if the city decides to push it off to the beginning of May, then you can't borrow or sell it in the middle of June. Which means you have 46 weeks of time to authorize it so that you can actually get the cash in hand because of the different...
Okay, so you, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Now, you also stated that the monies were part of last year's question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So when that occurred, a couple of questions, and why wasn't the council informed at the time that, for whatever reason, we would run out of funds right now?
Well, the timing of the writing out of funds is all dependent upon what the expenses are throughout the year, what is the time of cash? The city has different revenues coming in, but not all of them are coming at the same time every year, so it really is depending on timing. We do try not to borrow until we absolutely have to, to, you know, avoid the interest costs.
Okay, so then for the payout for exams, then what fund was that taken out of?
Whatever fund they are in. So if the exam is in a general fund, then it was taken out of general fund, transportation dollar fund.
Okay, so if the money was taken out of the general fund, then why wasn't the city council informed?
That is a question for management.
Okay, but, I mean, I'm sure that there's somewhere in the charter that speaks to the fact that, at a certain point, if there's authorization for monies for a particular group of people, which in this case would happen to do the exams, why wasn't the city council informed? And you just said that it's a management issue, so at this point, who can answer that question? Can anyone here answer the question?
The only people who can answer that question is the management team that actually paid it out, and there's no other here.[1020.12][1020.12](Laughter)
I would also like to comment, I would be $2.1 million dollars to talk about, both payments, maybe $300,000, $250,000, $300,000. The majority of what you're borrowing is what's paid out to your leading cops, to your CCA, your father, that's where the majority of it is.
Right, well, we, I think we all here, we all support that, we understand that there are hardworking people, all the people who are listed are hardworking, that's not the question here, it's not the hardship of the city, we recognize that, but it's just really about diligence in terms of information and sharing of information once again. So that's why I asked the question, you know, you stated that the exams go through different funds, this money's coming out of, so I'm trying to figure out, how does that work?
Well, we, for example, it's a different fund, I believe, just to clarify, you have different buckets of accumulating time. So the fund is, for the most part, the general fund, and then a little bit of the exams, I believe, are all in the general fund. So we talk about funds or buckets of accumulated time, you accumulate vacations, you pay comp time, and personal time, so those are the buckets, we had to ignore the buckets of time rather than time.
If I may ask a question. The city charter clearly states the exams are not eligible to comp time, so how are they accumulating comp time?
They don't. When we talk about, we have to use your CCA to fire the cops, if they're comp time.
Fine, what about the exams?
Exams are not paid out, or are they accumulating comp time? They're not paid out for comp time.
So, so I saw this list yesterday at 4 o'clock for the first time, of the employees that are being paid out, and there are a number of employees on here getting sizable payouts that are still city employees. The resolution that I was handed says this is to authorize the costs of separation payments. There's a lot of people here that are not separation payments. So, A, the resolution is not completely correct, because it's saying it's a separation payment, so I don't know if we need to go back and split this into two resolutions, but, and then the other thing is, so I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation on one exempt employee who's getting $108,000 payout. So the city charter says exempt employees can have one to 50 days of vacation comp time. [Unintelligible]
Which has a bunch of different funds. One fund is, um, there's a sick leave account, there's a personal leave account, there's a compensatory time account, and as such, when employees leave service, they have to be paid out for the monies owed them in these various accounts. The city at times, throughout my entire career, has also allowed people to cash in time at various times throughout their career, uh, whether they have a cash flow problem at home, or the city has the way we draw, and we can pay it off at the current rate rather than the, um, rate that the employee makes when they retire. In my case, the day that I saved from nineteen seventy-eight was worth about twenty-nine cents, which is worth a lot more today. So it would have been much more prudent to pay that off back then than to pay it today. So what this bond encompasses is all the people that separated from service and were obligated, we were obligated to pay this money that they took. Other people were dispaying separation and they received some money. And then the third category were some hardships. This money has, the most important thing that I want to know tonight, you, we can revisit whether or not you like the process, don't like the process, but this money has been spent. Failure to pay us this bond will mean there will be a, uh, a interruption in payroll. It will not be payroll for the end of the year. So that's the bottom line. If you vote this, if the council votes this down, we will be broke before the end of the year. Ms. Hightower, we want you to come up and expel upon that.
Good evening, Ms. Hightower. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to thank you, uh, for allowing the council to talk to you about two weeks ago, I think two weeks ago yesterday, um, we spoke on a conference call and you informed us, uh, everything about this, allowed us to ask as many questions as we needed to, um, and avail yourself to any future questions. So I thank you for being here for the public's benefit as well.
Very well. It's important for everyone to understand, you know, the purpose behind this. And, you know, tagging this with very well. And in a nutshell, you know, the city has contractual obligations to pay people out their separation pay that they're due under contracts when they leave. The city has a few options in where the financing, you can have a budget for them, you can borrow for them. For the two thousand eighteen fiscal year, the city opted to borrow for it. So in the last week's budget that was adopted, you did include separation pay borrowings in order to fund these payments. These payments have amounted to about two point one million projected by the end of the fiscal year, so that's exactly what we're putting forward, um, to be authorized today to make sure the city, that the city does not have that hole in the budget that year out. At the same time, these payments have been made throughout the year. So the city has fronted it cash, has had laid it out before it's getting reimbursed, therefore it's put a strain on the cash flow. So if, if you don't borrow it by the end of next month, the cash flow situation, the city will be dire.
And these payments have been going down year to year?
Yes, so I believe the one right before I came on board was about five point two million, then it rose to three point nine, it was three point two last year, now we're, and then it was two point, uh, three point two two years ago, two point four or five last year, and then that's your point on that show. So they are going down every year. And ideally, hopefully, once they get manageable, the city will have some budget for them and not have to do with them anymore.
And the ramifications if this doesn't pass?
I do take a look at cash flow, you know, Erin and I have been watching cash flow because this is the time of year where the city does have the least amount of cash to be given, with no last tax payments are filed in February, and there really aren't any more tax fees until mid-July, early August. By my estimations, by the third week in May, which means by the June first payroll, the city will not have cash paid, both vendors can get it personally.
The lack of payment for the vendors, what's the long-term ramifications to that?
Now, you're talking about, you know, the employee's health insurance, which is one about eight hundred thousand dollars a month. You work as comp.
Say that again, how much a month?
About eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars a month with your current health insurance, maybe nine hundred across all funds. Um, you have your workers who are less orders comp payment of six hundred thousand dollars due, so you would still be hospital insurance last week. And then this is also the time that the city's ramping up to get ready for each, to get ready for the season, so it would not be a great time for vendors to stop giving an apartment supply and cereal that they need to give to the city to get ready for the summer.
And you have, from the council, any questions?
Just one point of clarification, you just, it's been said twice in terms of the interruption of payroll, so you're, I just want to make, I just want to be clear on this, that it's not going to happen this week, it's going to happen three weeks from now in May, correct?
Yes, but, so, so the timeline, so you guys authorized this tonight. There is a, um, a twenty-day asap here, which is subject to commissive referendum, which means that the city cannot sell any debt associated with this organization for at least twenty business days. It usually winds up being twenty-three, twenty-four, by the time the court can actually get the notification in the paper, because it's actually from time it's published and from time it's authorized. Which means that the earliest you can sell this debt is like the middle of May, and then we can close the third week in May. So if it's not authorized today, if it lets them decide to push it off to the beginning of May, then you can't borrow or sell it in the middle of June. Which means you have forty-six weeks of time to authorize it so that you can actually get the cash in hand, because of the difference.
Okay, so you, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Now you also stated that the monies were part of last year's question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So when that occurred, um, a couple of questions, and why wasn't the council informed at the time, um, that for whatever reason, we would run out of funds right now?
Well, the timing of the writing out of funds is all dependent upon what the expenses are over the year, what, you know, the time of cash. The, the city has different revenues coming in, but not all of them are, uh, coming at the same time every year, so it really is depending on, on timing. We do try not to borrow, so we have something we absolutely have to, to, you know, avoid the interest costs.
Okay, so then for the payout for exams, then what fund was that taken out of?
Whatever fund they are in. So if the exam is in a general fund, then it was taken out of general fund, temporary salary fund.
Okay, so if the money was taken out of the general fund, then why wasn't the city council informed?
That is a question for management.
Okay, but, I mean, I'm sure that there's somewhere in the charter that speaks to the fact that, at, at a certain point, if there's authorization for monies for a particular group of people, which was, in this case, would happen to do the exams, well, I wasn't the city council informed. And you just said that it's a management issue, so at this point, who can answer that question? Can anyone here answer the question?
The only people who can answer that question is the management team that actually paid it out, and there are no other here.
I would also like to comment, I was talking one million dollars about the payments, how many, three hundred thousand, two fifty, three hundred thousand. The majority of what you're borrowing is what's paid out to your leaving cops, to your CCA, your father, that, that's where the majority of it is.
Right, well, we, I think we all here, we all support that, we understand that, um, there are hardworking people, all the people who are listed are hardworking, um, that's not the question here, it's not the hardship of the city, we recognize that, but it's just really about diligence in terms of information and sharing of information once again. So that's, that's why I asked the question, you, you, you know, you stated that the exams go to different funds, the monies coming out of, so I'm trying to figure out, how does, how does that work?
Well, we, we're starting to see some different funds, I, I believe, just to clarify, you have different buckets of accumulating time.
Okay.
So, um, the fund is, for the most part, the general fund, and then a little bit of, of the exams, I believe, are all in the general fund. Um, so we talk about funds or buckets of accumulated time, you accumulate vacations, set pay, comp time, and personal time, so those are the fun, like, we had to ignore more than bucket of time rather than time.
If I may ask a question, um, the city charter clearly states the exams are not eligible to comp time, so how are they accumulating comp time?
They don't. When we talk about, we have to use your CCA to fire the cops, if they're comp time.
Fine, you forgot the exams.
Exams are not paid out, or are they accumulating comp time? They're not paid out for comp time.
So, so I, I saw this list yesterday at four o'clock for the first time, of the employees that are being paid out, and there are a number of employees on here getting sizable payouts that are still city employees. The resolution that I was handed says this is to authorize the cost of separation payments. There's a lot of people here that are not separation payments. So, A, the resolution is not correct, because it's saying it's a separation payment, so I don't know if we need to go back and split this into two resolutions, but, um, and then the other thing is, so I did a, a back-of-the-envelope calculation on, uh, one exempt employee who's getting a hundred and eight thousand dollar payout. So the city charter says exempt employees can have one to fifty days of vacation comp approved. They get one and a quarter to six days a month. Based on this person's employment with the city, the amount of time they were here, the maximum payment I can come out with doing my math is fifty-two thousand dollars. How is this person getting another fifty-six thousand?
As far as the individual calculations, that's not between the city and the office I'm capable of, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay, so, we're, thank you for that, you just segued it to my next position. So if I can't make the math work, why am I supposed to believe the numbers that are on here? I've been given, my job as a fiduciary for the city is to make sure what I'm voting on is correct and, um, and, and accurate and verified.
The actual numbers on the spreadsheet didn't come from your general ledger, so they, as far as the amounts that were before seventeen, they came from amounts that were already paid in cash to these people.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying that. So do our exempt employees keep comp sheets?
No, I haven't said that.
They did, okay, so, uh, I, I certainly haven't seen any justification for the, to the amounts in there. That's, that's what I guess what I'm getting at, is...
Well, justification for the amounts is, is a different, I mean, a different conversation than whether or not the amounts were already paid out.
Uh, not just people that were already paid out, but they were paid out at incorrect amounts, blah, amount somebody made up, blah.
That will be determined internally, as to whether anybody received any interest enrichment through these payments.
So considering I haven't been given the information to do my due diligence, how am I supposed to vote for this?
Having due diligence to make sure that the amount that was paid out to employees are correct, um, is a process that should be put in place or can be put in place before payments are made to employees. These payments have already been made to employees. So by not authorizing this, you're not changing what has already happened, but you will put, possibly put the city in, um, a financial position that could have consequences long term.
Or you view it as a perpetuating bad behavior.
Uh, Councilman Vendo, if you would, if you had a second question, based on your question. Are you going to say when these payments were made?
Give the microphone, please.
Is that better?
Yes.
Are you going to say when these payments were made?
Are you talking about the specific, isn't that one that is still here? Which was, these payments have been any time between, uh, July first, two thousand seventeen, through April sixth, two thousand eighteen, for what's already been paid. And then there's a projection based on the payout schedules related to separation, even prior separation of employees that have paid over three years.
Can you just repeat the dates of July first?
Sure, so it would have been through July first, twenty seventeen, through now. And then it's, it's projected through the end of the year. When most people separate, they do not get a lump sum. Most of these people often be paid out over two or three years, based on their, with the city, and therefore they'll get the continued amount through the end of the year, and that's been accounted for yet.
Does this list, um, shown to the public?
No.
No.
Is there a reason we can't post it? They're paying for it, they deserve to know.
I mean, that's a matter for the council to discuss, that's all. I said that's a matter for the council to discuss, that's all. I mean, as far as other concerns, public information. Does anybody have any more questions for Kristi Hightower? Does anyone wish to speak from the audience?
Good evening, my name is Mr. Seventy-two Boyer. Um, I think most of you guys know I'm a bankruptcy attorney, and I have clients come in every day, and they tell me, I ask them, well, what led you to this problem? They say, well, we spent money, and we didn't have it. I don't see the difference here. Basically, what I've been told this evening is you spent money, and now if we don't pay it, we're going to default on it. And we not only did it this year, we did it the year before, and we did it the year before, and we did it the year before, and we did it the year before. Did I hear wrong? Well, I, I mean, I'm listening to this, and I don't understand, if you're budgeting, what I heard in direct talk was we could either budget for them or borrow for them. How is that a way to run a city? How is that a way to run a municipality? Where you either decide you're going to pay it and then borrow for it, or you properly budget for it? What am I missing? No, I understand, yes. I, I just don't understand. Now, it's also, the legislative memo says it's, uh, for retirement funds and other financial commitments and obligations. Yet, when you're looking at the ordinance, it's basically saying, um, for the cost of separation payments to, or for the benefit of employees of the city. This isn't for separation payments, from what I've heard, this is for payments that we've already made, and now we need the money, we need to borrow the money to make our payroll and pay our vendors. Did I hear that wrong? The silence is definite. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Well, I, I concluded your comments, I think I can respond to both of them. I think that when we went through the budget process last year, there were a number of considerations that each of us took into account. One of them was the impact of the tax increase on the residents of the city. There are things that we are able to bond for, so we can pay them out, so we should limit the number, the percentage of tax increase. We need to consider the fact that a number of these employees that were let go had years of service in the city and have since retired, whether they were CFA employees, whether they were lease employees. We can all debate whether we think that these payments were appropriate or not appropriate. The answer, the problem that we're faced with right now is that we entered into a framework, and we've all passed a unanimous decision, that counted and included an understanding that separation pay, which is very common, is the reason why the statute allows you to bond for separation pay is that most municipalities actually bond for separation pay, because it is an enormous bill that, you know, if you converted it into a tax increase, would have been unmanageable for a resident. So taking all of those things into consideration, and the fact that there were a number of employees that were retiring, who needed to be paid out pursuant to their contracts, that we were going to bond this portion, which is in compliance with the statute. Your other question, I think, is...
You're not bonding this part, what you did was...
Wait, wait, let me, let me finish, let me finish your comment.
Oh, certainly.
We, you pay it out as it comes up with an understanding that that portion of the budget is going to be filled by bonding for this amount of money. At least that's how it would explain to me, that's how I understood it at the time when we would pass on the budget, and we were all aware of the fact that this is something that we were going to do. We praised the fact that the number had been decreased over time, whether it was through bargains, negotiations with the different unions, about how things are paid out, and how this works. I, I think that this simply is an opportunity for us to look at how we are going to continue through the end of the year. We can all debate whether it would be appropriate, not appropriate. Nobody wants to wake up tomorrow in a city that is no longer going to be able to function. I, there are employees from our city who have retired, who are entitled to get this money, and there are employees who work here at the city right now, who I'm not prepared to take away the money that they get in their paycheck to pay for food, buildings, and their children and their families. We can debate whether it was right or wrong that these payments were made, but we're faced with one situation. We need to make sure that we can continue to run a city, and that the employees that work hard, and the vendors that provide us with different things, are paid. The alternative to that is years of litigation that will cost the city tremendous amount of money, and that's something that I'm not prepared to do.
All right, Ms. Dunning, first of all, yes, you're talking about employees that work for the city, but we're not privy to that. For some reason, the public's not privy to that. You guys all know what the amount is and who the people are, but for some reason, we're being kept in the dark. I don't understand that. Number two, the proper way to do this, and Mr. Tybee knows this, because that's how the school works, we don't borrow, we put money aside to pay for, uh, retirements. We put money aside to pay for people that are going out of service. And that's the proper way to budget, and believe me, I handled the budget, and Mr. Tybee did too, and he did a great job of it, handled a budget much bigger than the city's budget, and that's how we did it. We didn't say at the end of the year, oh, guess what, we're out of money, let's borrow money, and we didn't do that year after year after year. I understand you've done it now, and, you know, I don't know what to say. You know, you, you need to borrow the money, because you've already spent it, and that's exactly what you told us, you've already spent the money. So I, I guess we have no choice, do we?
I think as the Hightower has said, and as we said in the budget presentations earlier this year, this, the goal is to not have to bond for this. The numbers have come down long before I was on the council, she just mentioned that five years ago, what did she say, it was five million? So we're decreasing the amount with the hope that it will be a manageable number that we can put in the budget that won't impact our residents dramatically just to pay this particular bill.
It's great you're decreasing it, but you're still spending more than you're taking in. That's a formula for bankruptcy. Thank you.
State your name and address, all right?
Good evening, Mr. Dubow. Um, quick question, I know years ago, the city was in financial ruin, for lack of a better word, and we've gotten better through the years, and I thought there was a rainy day fund. Is there not a rainy day fund? And if there is, could that be used?
No. What, we have a, the fund balance is pretty much tied up with PMA. We have to lay out a lot of the money for the hundreds of million dollars, hundred-something million dollars in repairs. As that, that money was laid out, then we get reimbursed from FEMA, that restores our fund balance. But then another bill becomes due for, from the sidewalk, to the bulkhead, to the, the different things, so we're constantly funding. So right now, we have, um, four million in the bank from FEMA, that's due to pay off a rand in June, and then we are going to, we, out of the last agenda, another four million that we laid out, that, that we're going to borrow to pay back from money we laid out with FEMA, so we have so much money invested in FEMA, we're...
And FEMA, uh, over the city.
Yes. So we don't have the money to liquid. Right now, we, we're actually hedging of, of whether or not we will get the four million to us from FEMA before we have to borrow it next month. Because we, we spent the money, and we have to pay it back.
Right. So, so basically, the rainy day fund is tied up with the money that's over here?
That's my mistake, all right?
It's money that we, not, not money that we go to either FEMA or the state, but it's money that's incoming for us.
We have IOUs.
Yeah. One other thing, if you guys speak, really speak to the mic, are you always at the front? If anybody here has anything to say, it's in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Dubow. Ms. Hightower, can you just explain the rainy day fund?
So what people refer to as a rainy day fund is really the fund balance that's sitting in, for the most part, a general fund. New York states that certain bond lines, as far as will your fund balance should be maintained in a healthy fiscal environment. The rock bottom for a general fund is about five percent. They recommend ten percent, but they don't like to see less than five percent. Right now, the city is funded out just under five percent. So whatever rainy day fund is left, needs to be left there to weather any unforeseen emergencies. There's really nothing, um, available really to, because I understand if you use your rainy day fund, it's going to go down by two million, so now it's at a four million to two million. On an eighty million dollar budget, that's a very small amount to have to help pull the money.
I have just a quick follow-up question. When, we were on a conference call, it was actually on a conference call with you and Councilman Vendo, same question came up, what's the status of the rainy day fund, and what do we have on hand and why? You'd expressed to us that due to our deficit financing, it was almost prohibition against a certain amount in a rainy day fund. Can you explain that?
Yes, so there's certain IRS rules around borrowing, especially municipal borrowing, and it really, it's really congeners to the fact that when you find municipal debt and own municipal debt, the income you make from it is taxed exempt. So the IRS likes to limit the amount of taxes that, that's out in the market, because then if you don't buy the debt that the government does make tax on. So the IRS has all sorts of rules as to how you can't hurt in the tax exempt market, and the way it works, is the city's under deficit financing. So anything really over, uh, anywhere from five to eight percent, they allow you to have about a one to two month, um, reserve to be able to pay bills that they can do and wait for receipts to come in, but above that amount, you really can't, um, borrow anymore, or allow your fund balance to really accumulate above that. Anything above that, you need to use it to pay down some of that debt. So what the city has done over the last few years, because we did have a decent rainy day fund, except for this year's budget, but for all the budgets, I think three budgets prior to this, it, we appropriated fund balance to pay down the deficit financing, principal and interest, in order to use that rainy day fund, we get it down to a level where the IRS would be acceptable for our facility, in compliance with the deficit financing legislation that works on there.
Good evening, just state your name and address, all right?
Hi, my name is Karen Guinness, and I want to come to the, um, the fund issue is, is done, is a done deal, what I'm in the bridge. But what I ask of the council at this time is I don't want to hear explanations, I want to hear solutions. And the solution to this is to actually talk to the payroll clerk, who has to certify the payroll. And as a city council member, you have a right to ask for that payroll. You actually have a right to ask for it every month. You should be able to see who's accruing vacation ridiculously and why, so that if you're not giving away, which right now looks like hundreds, or maybe even millions of dollars in time, that was not earned. That comes out of my pocket. And second, um, with the upcoming budget, I suggest that council members have, which they have the right to ask for, this financing schedule of any, um, fund issuance coming up from the upcoming, I just think.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Amy Alasovich, Long Beach. As I understood, as I understand what you were talking about before, um, there are some people that got separation pay that still work for the city. My husband didn't get separation pay until he left his job, and that was in the course of over three years. Why are people getting, they can't all have, because the list looked pretty long from when Mr. Vendo put it up, all these people had some emergency financial situation that they needed to pay out right away, and why do you not budget, and I will, as Mr. Lester said, the school budget, you vote on it, then you spend. You don't spend and then take a vote on it. I, that's just not right. You're putting your workers in a pickle, you're putting the taxpayers in a hardship, and it just seems like, you know, well, what are we supposed to do to help, help families that can't have a paycheck, because nobody really looks at this and balances it? You're really burying a bit, both the workers and the taxpayers.
Please state your name and address.
Mike Willey, Long Beach. Um, this is, I just want, these are just my questions, uh, Councilman Vendo, kind of, really went over all of the questions that I would have, I'm sure others have, um, it's a budget issue, timing, and the, the one thing that this whole assembly has just said is something that I would have a question on as well. If somebody's continuing to work, they're not separated, so why would they be paying already, or can that be deferred to next budget year? That, these are my questions. Also, the cost of the two million, one hundred thousand at, on approximately three percent interest rates, I don't know what the cost of funds are, it's about four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and I just wanted to make sure that that money is in the budget if the, if this was anticipated in this past budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hightower? Ms. Ido? Can you speak to the interest rate? Potential interest rate? Yep.
Okay. So, um, first question is as far as maybe deferred to next year. These amounts were already paid out, so they can't be taken back. But, you know, tax is wrong. And people, if you were to come back, if they were paid out before separating, happened in 2017. Not in 2018. There's no mechanism to take that money, pay it prior year to the fourth year unless you're sad about it. As far as the interest rate, the city borrows, any of those two, three and 3.5 is long term. Uh, so the, you know, the $450,000 a year over five years is an accurate figure. However, the way that the city structured this type of borrowing is we couple it with other capital borrowings that have a 15, 20, 25, 30, 30-year PPU. And what you can do is you can use the weighted average. So the city actually gets anywhere from 12 to 15 years to pay these off. You don't have to pay it off in five, which is what the document has been used to, where we can smooth it out. As far as banking to the budget, I want to say before, these, this $2.1 million would have been additional 67% property tax increase if included in the budget. So while that should be a moment for both of the cities to start budgeting for these, in reality, it is, it is a lot of property taxes that need to push on the budget.
And... Quick follow-up question. Can you speak to why there would be separation pay for employees who are not separated?
That is a management decision as to whether or not they stay paid out employees or not. Some people are allowed to cash out some comp time. I know there, I, from when I was here, I know that there are some employees that their job is such and, you know, they're kind of the only person who does what they do. They're very, they're very rarely can take a vacation or any length of time off. Therefore, they're usually allowed to cash money that should be sent because they can't take their vacation. Sometimes that, um, it is a relatively small amount compared to the amount of separate employees.
When you said comp time, probably you were asking about exempt accrue and comp time. Is it solely comp time or is it other amounts that are accrued?
Amounts are, exempt on the crew comp time when you pay out of them. But your police, fire, and your crew workers all do.
What would exempt accrue?
Exempt accrue sick, vacation, and personal.
Is that what some exempt, paid out, sick, vacation, and personal?
Yes.
What's supposed to be paid out? What happens to the bank that that exempt would accrue?
For example, let's say somebody was paid out 100 hours of vacation. Their bank is reduced by 100 hours. So when they separate later on, then you don't pay those hours at the higher rate.
When you say separate later on?
Whenever they need to.
So if they're paid out at their current rate? Later on, they had a pay increase, they can pay later on at that higher rate?
If the, if the hours are still in the bank yet. But now?
I just have a good question again about last year's budget. So just based on this conversation, um, is it fair to say that the bound, the bond amount was actually counted as anticipated revenue?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just have a question in terms of, we want to get to a point, obviously, we want to get to a point where this is included in the budget. Is this a fairly common practice for municipalities that are in the financial situation that we are in, which I think most municipalities, right?
In its financial condition? Yes, it's definitely common. Ideally, you know, once the city can afford to budget for them, you would put in, kind of a set amount, you would, let's say it's 2 million. And then long-term, what it would probably be, let's say, if you budget 2 million, let's say, one year, it's 1.2 million. And you have the next year, you have $1,000,000. Usually I would, you know, put that in reserve to use towards next year's budget. And, you know, budget lasts for a longer time. Or what you can do is you can allow employees to cash out certain accumulated time that will be paid in separation anyway and lower those payouts at retirement. That way, you're paying at a lower rate. They're going to pay eventually, whether through them taking time and paying for overtime or whether they get paid out of retirement at a higher rate. So if you have a policy where certain people can cash out a certain vacation provided that the city has that amount available, it's a way to reduce your loan term liability associated with these payouts and also get them under control long-term. The city's just not there yet. There's been a lot of financial hurdles. The city's charged some over in the last five years. And it's going to be a long process. That's the financing alone is a 10-year process.
And where three years, three years and four years?
So our debt has been increasing dramatically over the last several years. It's continuing to go up. At what point do we bend the needle and stop that?
That is an administration and a council decision. As far as if you want your debt to go down, there's a few things you can put in place. You can look at what you're paying down the principal every year, which for example, next year, they put about 8.7 million, you're paying down the principal. So you can limit borrowing to, let's say, seven, eight million. So you know that it's going to go down by money next year, but you have to limit that borrowing. The biggest borrowing the city actually does every year is capital borrowing. Last year, you owe $39.5 million in city, in city capital borrowing.
So the city, over the last several years, has not shown that fiscal discipline to do that. And we continue to borrow more. And we're now burdening the people that be sitting up here five or 10 years from now. So a $450,000 debt service is going to be a 1.5% tax increase next year, right? Correct?
Yes, but as I mentioned with the weighted average, I estimate the actual debt service applies between 1.75 and 1.85.
So now we're making it their children's problem?
Well, it's not about that one.
Go out to 15 years now.
So it's a way to smooth it out so you don't have such huge property tax increases there. There is an option because the council did very well direct, you know, the city manager to move into the budget next year, increase taxes accordingly, and then he fixed this on forward. So that's definitely directed by the city council has to, you know, have to decide on.
And you would recommend how much, if we wanted to do that? $2 million stuff, the figure you mentioned before?
That would make sure that you wouldn't have to, have to borrow for the next few years. I feel that there'll probably, there'll probably be some around there. And there are other, you know, policies the city can implement to make sure that, you know, over the last year, we've been trying to turn around the finances of the city. There are a lot of retirement incentives to try to get, you know, the older workforce out, getting the younger workforce in and looking out there's services related to new hires, related to health insurance. So, you know, the newer workers, which you need health insurance contribution between new tiers and retirement, they do cost proportionally less than your older workforce. So there were retirement incentives offered so that, you know, move out and trade out, not play some position. The city's kind of run this course on that, you know, pretty much whoever, wherever you need to have to replace. You're running pretty many people on force. So you can, you know, have a policy that not many more time incentives than people need. You know, what they, what they're supposed to get through their contract is what they get. You know, there's a way to pop new work with employees and have a longer payback period than you pay them in five years. Or if you're going to pay it over three years, maybe for one and a half years, you don't play that position to help give the first one and a half years of the payout. There's different avenues that the city should go. It's just a matter of what, you know, what is most powerful.
But the establishment of a $2 million fund would equate to roughly 7% tax increase. Correct?
Anyone else from the follow-up? Yes? Please state your name and address.
Nori Ennis. I'm just wondering if Jack Sherman, one of the people that are a part of getting a payout, because he did not fulfill his contract with the city? I'm sure you're aware.
Jack did give a payout, yes.
He did. But why would he get when he didn't fulfill, fulfill his contract?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know. His contract was over at the end of, on January, I mean, on the 31st.
Okay, so he knew he was, so he, he written notice before he won the election that he quit it? November 8th was the election?
Nice.
So it states in his contract, um, that the employee shall give the employer of the city two months' written notice in advance. So if he didn't give...
My understanding is that his contract ended on December 31st.
Of what year?
Of last year.
2017.
Because the, the council, my, this is my understanding, and Rob was right me for a moment. The council gave him a contract. Is any city manager a contractor, should they choose? But on January 1st, the city ma, the, the composition of the city council changed. So the new city council cannot be beholden to a contract with someone else. So his contract is voided on December 31st of the previous year when the new council takes office. Is that correct, Rob?
It is. But I think the more, to answer your question, well, I don't remember. I haven't seen the contract in a while.
I have it right here.
Okay, I haven't seen it in a while. And I don't believe that, that his payouts were necessarily governed by the contents of that contract. They are governed by a code, for example. I don't, I don't recall. If you have it in front of you, you can read it.
Okay, so it says, in the event the employee resigns during the term of this agreement, the employee shall be compensated, blah, blah, blah. Um... However, uh, okay, where I just, yeah, okay. In the event the employee voluntarily resigns his position, did he or did he not voluntarily resign with the employer before the expiration of the term of employment? Then the employee should give the employer, the city, two months' written notice in advance, unless parties agree otherwise. So was there an agreement with parties? And would the party be...
I don't think that necessarily would...
So why, to me, it would...
I want you to answer your question. I don't think that what you just read would necessarily relieve the city of its obligation under the code to issue that payout.
So is it going to give it...
The code is someone's going to wind up superseding anything in that contract. And I don't think that you've read anything from that contract which would, again, relieve the city of its obligation to pay out an outgoing employee.
But did he give us two months' written notice?
I mean, I, I worked for him, so it wasn't given to me.
So who would it have been given to?
I'm sorry?
Who would it have been given to?
Yeah, but she's saying, what, you see, I believe this is the kind they can say is that she didn't provide proper notice.
He didn't, well, you know, for other concern, he didn't. Like if he won the election like November 8th, and I think we didn't know the results until like really like November 9th, and then he came into office January 1st, you have holidays and weekends, like you're not getting your two months.
No, I understand.
So does that not make this contract non-void or...
No, it definitely would not, under those circumstances. The payout obligation exists separate and apart from his contract.
And is that, is that like a side item here that I'm missing somewhere? I don't see it any, I don't see it in the contract, like that there's any...
Well, you don't need something to say that city code applies. It always applies regardless of whether it's embedded in that contract or not.
Okay.
Can you just explain?
Could you just explain it, like just for the Irish and the daughters?
There's a section of the city code that governs payouts for exempt employees. That provision applies, especially if the contract is signed on that way. I hope I borrowed it.
So we thought of the head, right? Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay.
So I would like to hear Mr. Merrell's question, too.
I was going to ask a question. Can you explain? I don't want to put work in there. You see, I was... You're saying there's a difference between the salary pursuant to the contract and the payout pursuant to the code?
There absolutely is, yes.
And is that, well, you're, that's your responsibility to take into question?
Correct.
What has nothing to do with the other?
Correct.
Okay, I was confused.
So, well, so I have a question. How long is mine? So the example that I gave earlier was a former city manager. And if you follow the code, if he was a city employee for six years and never took a sick day, and he took all his approved vacation time that the charter allows, and based on his salary, he should have been paid $52,360. He got $108,022. Now being asked to vote for something that approves that, and nobody can explain to me why he got paid more than double what the city charter says he should have been paid.
Okay, the explanation was given early, but maybe wasn't exactly clear. There are employees that do not have the luxury of taking time off. I have to be one of those for the last four months. I've not taken a day off since I've taken on two jobs. So should I be penalized when I separate but not having to take time off? And when you're calculating that, you're using the 50-day maximum formula. I can tell you, as a matter of course, Jack had way more than 50 days of vacation time or whatever bank you're talking about, just by virtue of the fact that I was appointed as acting city manager. So I had to be noticed whenever he was leaving town or taking vacation. And I think there were three vacations he took in the six years. So that's a number that is wasteful.
Okay, so the city charter does not allow an exempt employee to get comp time. It is clear. The city charter does not allow an exempt employee to have more than 50 days of vacation approved. If he was paid out at a higher rate, then the city charter was violating.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you couldn't hear him.
I'm sorry.
I was just asking, so then how do we know how he was paid out? Or how do we know how anyone was paid out? What formula is used is what I mean, Mr. Merrell?
Some city employees have like clock in or time in, time out sheets or...
Lunch.
They do have time sheets?
Correct.
So I know that Mr. Sherman has been at events that I've taken time off or personally for. And I don't honestly believe that he's taken the ti, or he had taken the time off. So if we want to go back and read the diary or read the time and stuff, and we see, can we do that before we give an employee like their payout? Do we have to like pass off on this? Can we do like a little bit of some kind of audit on what is being going on?
The pants were issued, right? So...
So then why are we having this thing? There already being issues.
Well, that's one of the points that the former controller, Mr. Manager, made, was this concept that he's said that now our obligation is paid in order to make payroll as the former controller very succinctly stated before. I mean, this is what's done is done. It's water under the bridge, as the speaker said.
So you see somebody's pay and you're going to have somebody who can't like get paid?
So I, I think, I think everyone sitting up here, um, is somewhat disappointed and appalled by what's happening and how these payouts are created. But this already happened. So what I'm thinking is moving forward, I think the council needs to meet and discuss possible resolutions for payouts moving forward. I think that's what we need to do. Um, but unfortunately, this isn't the time for that because we're speaking about a bond. And we're speaking about a bond to borrow money from money we already spent. However, as I can say, this is something moving forward that I think the entire council needs to revisit on payouts in the future. I don't think any of us is happy about this, but it is the hand, the hand we've dealt. So is there any other next speaker?
Sure, Jacob Longbeach. Um, I'm going to use your word, Mr. Ramon. Uh, I too am disappointed and appalled at the council's actual, well, faint lack of understanding of how this whole thing did. When I say faint or actual, I'm sure at least three of you are of action. I'll give it, I'm sure, to you, contract with the dog. How you can ask a council member to vote on something when you're only informed about the specifics of the expenditure the day before is unconscionable to me. However, it's not without precedent here in this city. Now, just a benefit to those who don't know, the way, my understanding, what was discussed by Ms. High Tower, if there are payments that were going to be contractual obligations, let's say, some were called separation payments, and now apparently some are pointing to people who aren't separated. Now, I can't speak to the CDA contract, I can't speak to the CSA contract, but, uh, when I was Long Beach, Dave Fineman, we had a provision on contract that allows to take pay downs, which was you could take a partial payment of money that you owe against your various acts of time. You were capped out at $10,000 a year per member. And was it at the discretion of the city manager? If the city manager determined that the city didn't have sufficient cash for paying the payout, you didn't get it. Now, what seems to me here is, that's what happened. Now, unless there's some mandatory provision in these other bargaining contracts, and I certainly know there's none in any exempt employee contract that mandated that you pay them down, then it seems to me that you guys had the discretion not to. And you chose to anyway. Now... Now, you come to us and saying, "Well, we've given away this money." Obligated to give it away, debate it. Obviously, discretion was exercised by somebody to pay this money, and you're saying, "We now need to bond in order to replace the monies that we already spent." And if you don't do this bond, if you don't get this money, that somehow other city services are going to be held hostage, that those other city services are going to have to cease if this money is in cash. How about we go to the fifth floor of City Hall and just start trimming millions of dollars in wasteful salary incentives and packages that are going to be delivered to your fiscal irresponsibility? Don't pass that by.
So there is not many of the dollars on the fifth floor. And we're all providing the exact same information. Last year, the budget was voted unanimous, knowing that we were going to have to borrow for separation pay. Did anyone up here know if separation pay includes folks that may still be here? You're, I think you're talking...
Let me just let me finish.
So did anyone up here know that? No, I don't think we were, any of us were informed. Did we all vote unanimously for a budget that included borrowing for payouts because we can't increase taxes by that much to currently save for an expense we know we're gonna have? Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to what you probably lived in town, to city manager Howard Poor, re-present presentation. The first and only budget presentation by a city manager that I ever saw, where he discussed, actually disclosed, the amount of unbonded debt that the city was looking at, interred by virtue of all of the various forms of hours that were owed to its workforce. Howard Poor, who can date that? Fifteen years ago? Sixteen years ago?
Two thousand and thirty.
Okay. He said that it was, it was twenty million dollars in unbonded debt for employee accrued time. That number has got to be called four or five times at now. How do you guys not know? And you're just gonna ignore it? It's there. Prepare for it. You know, if you don't watch it for it, you're gonna have to bond for it. Don't act like you guys didn't know about it.
No, I told you. I said, "We did know we were gonna have to make payments."
How much does the city owe right now?
We planned to bond. We planned to bond.
Can you specify right now, to the amount of time that is owed to the city workforce? Do you have the dollar?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hesse.
You don't have the dollar. That's due response.
Thank you. Please speak, Janine Manajos.
Joe Robson, Long Beach. Councilman Bendo was saying that he sees a major discrepancy. That concerns me, because if he, if he's off by that much money, I know, me also being a member of the five of them, if I left with those hours, you see my hours, there's no, there's no confusion there. But you're saying that the city manager left, and it's a huge conspiracy, to me it seems like, with the hours, and you're saying it's water under the bridge. To me, it sounds like criminal activity.
I remember him asking these questions, and how can you say it's water under the bridge?
That's not the expression I used. That was, that was a phrase Mr. Lester used.
I need to ask you, Long Beach.
Thank you.
To go along with what he said, Jack was up here with his initial comments every single meeting, saying that everything's, we were doing so much better, we're okay, we don't have to worry about money. He was like lollipops and roses all the time. I think it's criminal what he's done. And when you say that we should look at moving forward, some of the questions that come up up here, I think, the council, did you ever look at this stuff? Did you ever look at the budget? Because when you're asking some of these questions, it's as if you know nothing. Now, he said, "Moving forward, we'll look at some of these things." I suggest we move backward. Many people in Long Beach got money from New York Horizon. New York Horizon looked backward and called them and said, "We want our money back." I think we should do the same thing. Early on, Jack wanted medical benefits for life for himself. And that was...
That was when he was on vacation. I was not on the council, I was in the audience.
We know what that was. I would suggest that he probably orchestrated this deal for himself when this, whatever, you know, Mr. Agus DC said the management team that worked on it are all gone, and he's gone. I think you should look back and get that money back, just like New York Horizon is. If he doesn't deserve that money, why should he get it? It's ridiculous that we have to suffer for that. I also have a question to something that came up earlier. Did you say that the employees get one and a half sick days per month?
I, I don't, I don't, not exactly sure.
They get one and a quarter. One and a quarter. All right, that's fifteen days a year of sick days that they've accrued, plus vacation, plus one other thing. I think you should start looking at those contracts again. Most people get three sick days, and they use them if they're sick. They don't save them up and get all these big payouts. I mean, look at, look at what you're paying some people, and look at the benefits that they're getting, and make some strong decisions about this. It's like, it's not good. And I, I think the, the council has not had any leadership. You keep blaming the last administration, which, how long ago is it now? It's ridiculous to blame them. And then you ask questions, you don't even, you don't know what's going on, and you just keep tossing it back to us if they're paying more taxes or more fees.
Anyone else for that public to speak? Is there a hand back here?
Well, well, this has to, this has to just be your information. When, when a, when an employee is paid out for their sick fund, they, they can only cash out thirty percent of their approved sick fund, not a hundred percent.
Name and address, please.
Sam Pinto, Long Beach. Steve H. Citizen, resident, city worker, and primarily a union leader. A quick question. Do the exents have a contractual obligation on schedule for their payouts?
As described previously, Mr. Pinto. It's covered by the code.
Covered by the code. Another question. What takes priority? Their payouts or the workers' salaries? There's discrepancy, because there's issues with the things, nothing seem to close...
They're all priorities.
They're all priorities. I'm saying, so you're writing that we don't bond this. Do they get delayed, or do we not get paid?
Here's, 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 let me explain this. There are contractual obligations. There are contractual obligations applied here. Most of the employees, I think all but twenty-three of this, are guaranteed by contract that we have to pay. We have no choice. And nobody takes priority over another person. Everybody's a priority. I mean, the payroll is a priority for everybody who's going.
So my question is, what takes priority? If we don't bond this, payoffs finish up, or they're gonna have their payouts delayed?
As described.
Even if they, they didn't happen yet, those payouts didn't happen, huh?
The payouts haven't.
They already have. They all, they're already happened.
Yeah.
So I have a question, because you keep talking about the City Code, City Charter. Section twenty, Part Six lays out that the city manager should be giving a report at every single council meeting, any change in personnel. And that hasn't happened once in a decade or ten years. So how do you expect, if they publicly announce these things at meetings, if he doesn't do it?
The personnel reports file once a month.
Publicly announced, right here?
It's right here.
Every month? So how, so how come, so how come it isn't formally announced, or why is it put up on the wall, since you guys are saying, because it seems like not everyone knows when people are having their payouts or their, their separation of service? If it's not explained, it's just hidden on a piece of paper, why can't we get to the option of actually publicly announcing it? And includes something that Mr. Pinto wrote previously, and I think it's...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Brady doesn't ask that at every meeting. You have to remember, monthly personnel reporting, so two separate things you're talking about. You can play the two different things, Sam.
Okay, so I mean, I'll read the code and answer. I don't know if it happens. I forgot my question. Okay, so I have no reason to read it. But I will read something else, because it seems to be a little bit of miscommunication on the end of the council. It comes from the January paragraph, where it says, "Shnerben formally resigned as city manager on January 1st." So that means the contract wasn't up to standard the first. And as part of his contract with the city, so because of his contract, he was entitled more than a hundred thousand dollars in unused vacation and sick leave. These were recorded to documents obtained by Ford. The next paragraph actually ends up with a quote from Mr. Romo. "It's a big loss for Long Beach, but our loss is the county's gain. He's gonna do a great job. We still have a lot of work to do in Long Beach, but he set us on the right path." Come on, let's be real about this. You can't expect members of the council to vote for things that are not clearly explained. You can't expect the workforce to be worried about not getting paid because of bonding issues. And you can't expect the taxpayers to be put at battle with the workforce, because they're not gonna get paid or it's gonna be a tax, a tax increase. It's a stopper going, you guys. We should really do better than this.
Please speak, your name and address on the record.
Troy Farby, twenty-eight Wyoming. I just want to make sure he's only getting one payout, right?
I, I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was not enough. I want to make sure that he's only getting one payout, because you said that they paid out over three years. Or is that just contractual?
Yeah, that's, on certain union contracts, you get paid out over three years.
So he's only getting one payment then, not...
That's what he elected.
All right, well, I just didn't want it to be a hundred and eighty next year.
No, no, that's just...
Okay, I'm, well, I think you open the door for my free minutes, if you're gonna come out there, but I'll wait.
Anyone else from the public? Anything else from the council? Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
On to the regular calendar. I had one responsibility to authorize a financing for course of separation payments. Two or four vendors employees of the city said the estimated total cost of development to two million one hundred thousand dollars appropriated, sent amount therefore authorized the issuance of not to exceed two million one hundred thousand dollar bonds. Assessive finance of appropriation, a hearing has been held on this side of the hearing. I intuise a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue agreements with the operation of additional food trucks in the city's Riverside Food Watcher Shorgis.
Yes, with the reconfiguration of the Shorgis Board, we realized three additional spaces that local businesses have requested to be able to put a truck there. So we're going to increase the number of trucks and the diversity of the food, and all of these venues will be paid in the city. The three new venues will pay a total of seventeen thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Yes, it's the Waffle Cabin from down west, the Gourmet Mobile Express from Rock Center, and the Chop Salad from Three Fourth. The first two will pay six, pay six thousand for the option, and the Chop Salad paid five thousand eight hundred thirty-seven thousand nine cents, for the total I mentioned previously.
Any questions from the council?
The vendors pay, I believe, about six thousand dollars for the summer each. Sorry, the vendors pay about six thousand dollars for the summer each. So with twelve vendors, that would be seventy-two thousand dollars. Do we know what the city spends on utilities and cleaning and maintenance of the area?
No idea.
Okay, so we don't know if we're actually losing some money on this. I mean, it's a good thing, we don't like it, but we don't know if we're subsidizing the operations.
Well, there's, you know, it's an interesting comment. You have a operation of city government that's going on during the day. So granted, our cleanup, our highway department does go down and clean it up, that's just another one of the jobs. So if you went to price out, cutting grass, and it would be very similar to that. So it's a nice thing that we provide for the city that really is not worth the exercise of...
We're not very open time.
No, it's not all the time associated.
It was just part of the normal routine.
Yes.
And my understanding is all the contracts are up next year? Is that right? That these are additional contracts for, right, at District Storm Standing, where we try to start something?
The first, the first round.
The first round is expired next year, so... Anyone from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement for asphalt overlay work.
Okay, as you're all aware, we had a very brutal winter. There are numerous potholes that were repaired, and some of the roads were in suspicious repair that they needed an overlay. An overlay is much different from a pothole repair, where you just add coal patch in the winter, and they come back in the spring and seal it. This is an actual overlay, the entire road, that DPW has inspected and does, is confident that the infrastructure, all of the services beneath the road service do not need to be repaired or altered in any way, so that the overlay is a reasonable combination and it keeps our road in good shape.
I have a question for Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. You could just speak a little bit to the project specifically that's mentioned, the Riverside Boulevard and East Fulton Street. My understanding is the Parkinoff MLK Center.
That's right. That was a drainage improvement and a overlay of walking field, which was about eighteen thousand dollars of the project.
Thank you.
Did you want to know else you put in the project?
I just want to... Well, sure.
Okay, just, just, you know, we had a four hundred thousand dollar budget for the overlay project, which included the walking field at the MLK Center, but also the beach street from the bottom of Tennessee, Chester Street from Neptune to Curly, and Broadway from Able to Pacific. And generally, in asphalt projects, we build a road, and when we put the bid out for the contract, we do it based on square footage of road that we're actually going to overlay. But when you do building, you get different fluctuations, the amount of asphalt that actually goes down. So our, the amount that we put in the bid was a little off, so we still didn't have enough money in the budget, but we needed to, to add, to change order for the additional asphalt, that was later.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to amend its contract for rehabilitation of the sand filters, sand filter building, and sand filter drip station at the wastewater treatment plant.
And anyone that lifted during the sanding saw court bodies on every corner because our wastewater treatment system plan went down due to flooding, and this is residual damage that we'll be fixing at the wastewater treatment plant, and it also is positioning us to get the building in the correct shape, the out, the outflow pipe interconnection and line up with the, let's see, one in time, John? No, they went on the big block, but that's one next to the... So this is to handle that pumping station.
Any questions from the public? I mean, from the council?
The resolution mentions that the electrical heaters were subsurface, the ones that are being repaired. Are they gonna be elevated, or are you repairing them in place and it'll still be subsurface?
They're, could it be still subsurface? The only way to do a good plant.
Okay, so is there a way to harden them against the...
Yeah. You know, that plan was completely underwater. We are, we do have an HMP project that has a mitigation project that's been already sent to FEMA for approval, which will lock the plant in defense.
Okay, so that'd be done separately?
That's done separately. So, and, and just as a, as a note, we have put this project, this change order into FEMA as a PW project. We never closed out the complete project with the sand filters, so there's a very good chance we'll get reversed with this one, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
I implore as a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years, authorizing publication of the general summary of proposed budget for year July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen, and notice public hearings now on. Deciding publication only hearing to be held May first and May thirteenth at seven p.m. I implore as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law making the charter of the city of Long Beach Garden Sewer Rents. Deciding publication only hearing, uh, excuse me, hearing will be held May first at seven p.m. I implore as a bond order that's authorized financing for course of separation payments. Two or four to benefit of employees in the city stating the estimated total cost of their allowance two million one hundred thousand dollars, appropriating certain amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million one hundred thousand dollar bonds of sensitive finance and appropriation. I'm sure some of these options are this side.
I will, I will.
This is one of these times where you feel like you gotta go and tell the... This is one of these times where you feel like you've got it done, hell, you haven't. What I think needs to happen is, this council and the city workforce representation need to sit down this week, sharpen the pencils, and work this out. I cannot understand that, I only have information to know if this stuff is right. I'm sorry, I will tell.
The reality is that these things were already made, and I think at this point, what we need to do to be responsible and to avoid bringing the city to a standstill or a shutdown is to go forward with this, and then making the answer is to look to audit and see how the calculations will be, but not to complete the two and punish our workforce or punish our residents by having to shut down. So at this point, I would vote yes.
Councilor Moore.
So tonight learned, or I learned, that the bond separation payment last year and the year previously was included as anticipated revenue. This is core procedure. Good government lessens deficits, reduces taxes, and is also transparent in respect for sharing information regarding spending towards the revenue and the process for collecting and spending. Questions were asked tonight because now everything is in question. It's unfortunate that this item was not tabled for a special meeting so that other additional information could have been received. With that being said, tonight, I'm calling for budget reform. We can no longer continue to do or to act in this way. We must have budget reform. The public cannot be left in the dark. In addition, many questions that were, that were raised this evening was only because of the fact that this was for the first time that I learned that the exams were included in this separation payment. For years past, it was my understanding that the numbers that were shared with us were only with respect to police, fire, and CSEA, all of which, in, in times past, we never had an issue with. But today, now that we have new information with respect to exams, I will have to vote no, because we must...
Ms. President, go ahead.
I think it's safe to assume that nobody wants to borrow money, nobody wants to vote to bond, and nobody wants to vote to pay for these expenses. However, in passing the budget last year, we made the conscious decision that separation was paid would be funded for in order to limit the amount of tax increase that was imposed on our revenue. I too was not aware of the fact that this separation pay, or these monies were paid to exempt employees and those who did not leave the city. However, in my understanding, is that can't be, cannot be refunded now until there's an actual analysis of what and if it was paid properly. However, who was paid and why it was paid, at this point and today, is not the issue. We need to understand that our city will be shut down, our vendors will not be paid, our employees will be sent home if we cannot make payroll and we cannot pay for the expenses that we've incurred. This money has already been paid. With that said, what I will not do is vote to shut down a city and to send our employees home without pay. They are entitled to pay their families, just as we all are. And with that, I vote yes.
So no one is happy about this? As you may or may not know, this item has already failed. Since it's a bond, it did need four, super majority of four, five. So it did in fact already fail, which means there is going to be some pain felt, there is going to be shutdowns, there is potentially going to be layoffs, potentially all part-time employees might be laid off, potentially police, fire, contracts will have to be looked at. So that's where we are. Unfortunately, these payments were paid. This bond was to, to pay for money we already spent on information that we all had. So my vote is yes.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter two agreements in the operation of additional food trucks in the city's Riverside Food Market Shores.
I will.
Yes.
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 I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement for asphalt overlay work.
I will.
I will. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to amend its contract for rehabilitation of the sand filters, sand filter building, and sand fil, sand filter lift station at the wastewater treatment plant.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement plan, capital improvement program for the next five years, and authorize publication of the general summary of the proposed project for the year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and notice the public hearings now on.
I will.
I will. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law making the charter of the city of Long Beach Garden Sewer Rents.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. We now enter our good welfare section. Three minutes are on the short of time. Please remember to be respectful and maintain the order. Joy McCarthy. Please state your name and address on the record.
Joy McCarthy, am I on?
Yes, I'm on.
Joy McCarthy, 28 Wyoming Avenue. You know, so many of the people that work in the city are my friends, and like, yeah, well, I'm in a, like, a kind of, like, weird state. But I, um, but you have to be in there too. You know, something has to be. And unfortunately, I'm moving out now in the next eighteen months. And I'm up here tonight because I really feel like I have to do something, I have to say something for my neighbors. They're... This can't continue. This is not sustainable. My husband is a mere city firefighter. He had a roofing business in town up until about two years after the storm. He also with his brother flipped about five houses in town until about 2008, when you couldn't really, they got a level one break. Um, he makes a good salary, and I got to stay home with my four kids. He wants to retire. He deserves to retire, and he deserves to retire when... And we, we can't stay here, but I, I, I also have a special needs child, and I need to put money into his special needs trust, not pay it to, I'm going to get, I'm pissed, to the city that's not getting our pockets, to the city that sometimes feel like has a blatant disregard for the people that live here. And I've lived here for fifty years. I grew up, this is, this is my home. I grew up dirt poor in the West End, where the West End wasn't trendy, okay? It wasn't trendy. Um, you didn't want to stay, it was in the West End, you know? And now I, and now I love it, and I have to leave it. I don't have, I'm, I'm making a choice. I'm making the best, fight natural choice for my family. Um, and I'm not the only one. And I've talked to like four or five different families, people are already like, my parents left a while ago, my mother-in-law left a while ago. It's just getting worse and worse. I, I, and I've come up here before, I haven't been here in a while, I didn't even change forms, whatever, because it just got to be tired. And I got to tell you, some of the things, it's just, the thing is, I thought we could be snowbirds, like, where we could rent out our house, I was trying to manipulate things around to figure out, but like Roy said, that's not the way to do it. It started to feel more and more like a repotting, more and more. So hard for me, and I'm going to, but I'm going to say it anyway, when I wasn't allowed to go to primary, that was rough. It was just rough, like, rough. There was, it was in this... So, because I'm, I want, you know, I want people smiling, I want to be, you know, older than, you know, but I've got neighbors, and I want them to be able to stay and live where they want to live and have the life that they've worked really hard for. And so I'm hoping going forward, you figure out whatever you got to do. And these people with contracts, they, these contracts were signed by the city and by the workers, so it's their money, whatever that, I, I can't even discuss that, I'm, my three minutes are up. But I, I really hope for, for the people that I love and live here longer than I do, and I'm going to be in May, two November, that you work this out. It's, it's uncontradictive, it's, it's not sustainable. If taxes were up twenty, twenty-five percent, like, I'm, you're wrong, ladies on Facebook, like, my taxes will go from twenty thousand, because I'm very fortunate to own a lot behind me, it's going to be twenty-six thousand dollars. Who, that's not, absolutely nuts, but thirty-five, one-twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Ms. Chastain, if you want to start coming up, I'll call you whenever you're ready.
Mary Almason, if you want to speak. Um, just to go back to what just went on here, um, I, I hope that everybody here is thankful for what happened here. I, I feel to the guys, who didn't take care, take care. I, I think it's disgusting, that giving out hostages. And I think many years back on the school board, go back to that drawing board and look at your head set, there is always excess. And I think it's about time you do it, all right? Because break it in a little time, pay for people that can't even take the time to answer questions. What is good and well-being? Someone tell me, because all you do is listen, shake your heads, look at each other, and you don't answer a person. Here's a poor lady who, her husband worked all his life, and you can't even stay here. I'm not far behind, so, I am not far behind, and I have news for you, there are a lot of info. And God bless you all next November. And I'm talking about, I'm not talking about Mr. Bender, just got on, or I'm, I'm not talking about Ms. Moore, but some of you were here a long time, I will assure you, okay? And, and you're, you're responsible. You should have known, and I said this last meeting, you should have known. How did you not know? My husband's family out of business. I knew everything going on in that office, the drivers, the nurses, I knew everything going on. And you sit here, let me tell you, the perception is not good. It really isn't. It's like, you don't know what the hell is going on. And that's terrible, and we're supposed to trust you to do the right thing? I, I, I don't trust, I don't trust, I have no trust. And I have no trust for Mr. Schneeman, because he knew this too. You overspent, you overdid, you did too much, you don't spend what, I would love to have done my house a whole lot different. I, I do what I can afford to do. My husband pays off credit funds every monthly call. If you can't do and pay your bills, then don't overextend yourself. And you've done it, time after time after time. Okay, I've said my piece now, I'd just like to say, the doggy's bed now is having cleanup Saturday, you'll have to see some of the stuff.
We, where we are now is, because of the vote that was taken tonight, we now have to figure out how to move forward. And what I stated earlier, and I'm sure I'm going to get some nasty grains from some of the CSEA people tomorrow, but as I've said, this council, and this needs to happen over the next few days, not weeks, needs to be sitting down with labor representation, and we all need to sit down, and we're all in this together, and we need to fix this. That's what we need to do.
Hey, you know, when it comes to election time, and then, well, you, or is it, you all want that CSEA monument, the backup, well, you know.
Ms. Mona Goodman. Liz, if you want to make your way up, I'll call you whenever you're up here, okay?
On the left.
On the left?
No.
Ms. McGinnis, Karen McGinnis?
Well, I thought I was coming now.
Oh, I thought you should take a little bit, so I figured, so you can take your time. What should be a rush, Ms. Chastain?
Oh, please, mister. I'm far from rushing.
Good evening. Just state your name and address on the record.
Uh, Ms. President, I have to say, I did prepare something personally, but I also fall at what happened. Is there not a way that you can make a special announcement right now that you will need to fix what just happened in the next few days so the city does not shut down? And you don't send panic throughout the town?
There's definitely going to be some meetings, and I, definitely Rob and Mike already spoke that they're going to be early tomorrow morning.
So that tomorrow we will know something that from Friday or garbage will be fixed?
I don't know how long, I don't know, I don't know, I can't give you a timeline, I don't know what's going to happen.
So then I'm going to quickly run through my other, I emailed, ironically, I emailed about the ethics committee and the budget. Independent vote was done in 2010, 2011, and I haven't received a response. I'm asking about the email as we were led to believe as of last May, our financial state was something we should not worry about. I'm worried, and I want to know what happened. And obviously, something did, and someone dropped the ball. Is this the method to find that out? Is deceiving unethical? Also, maybe, Mr. Ronald, I think it's presumptuous of you to think that presidents all have smartphones to report something using the response app. Not everyone does, nor access to computers and information electronically, getting responsible and correct information to everyone in department so we can do a better job. Speaking of which, why are we not going to stream the ACE meeting tomorrow? Army Corps of Engineers, is it a matter of overtime? That would require a response. Why are we not streaming the ACE meeting?
I think, you, you emailed, right? And I think you got an answer to that, that it wasn't our meeting?
No, that was, that was regarding the...
I thought, I thought Commissioner tagged me, I emailed you back.
No, he was acting on, um, Commissioner's...
We didn't have the capability to do it, that it wasn't our meeting, it was hosting.
This is not, which, right there. I mean, the commanding officer is up to do a great job. So what, I don't understand why we don't have the capability. We have the capability, it's just, you don't want to do it, or you, you can't do it because of overtime, no one else is going to use that machine, I don't know. I'm, I'm serious, I'm not being sarcastic, although I've never, it's noted that I have been narcoleptic. But I'm asking questions, no, yes?
I, I, I don't know the answer to your question, but I can tell you is we, we all saw the response from the city manager saying that it wasn't possible.
That was a part, that was...
No, no, it was in response, it was in, it was in response to your question regarding tomorrow's, tomorrow's meeting.
It is tomorrow.
Yeah, it's regarding the, the thing that he, and I...
But he saw a G, he emailed, what?
I don't know even why he said that it was not possible, I'm just not aware. I know that he got back to you as soon as you, or as soon after you responded.
So, getting back...
I meant to note that in reality, it's not, it is in our meeting, and we, I don't believe that the city streamed everything that happened up here anyway.
No, they only streamed city council meetings, which no one knows about either, because the official Facebook page... the official Facebook page never announces that there's a city council meeting.
Well, we rely on our wonderful commanding officers.
Do you pay them, do you pay them?
It was a joke, it was a joke.
Yeah, well, we don't pay them. So let's make some more jokes. Um, why aren't we even using Ustream? And well, if someone asks where he went, and asks if he's using, we know if we're using the enterprise pro course testing? Because if that's the one that's gonna be closed captioned for people that require that, and again, I'd like to thank the commanding officers for doing that job, because their use of that is closed captioned. And again, city, not following me again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Trusson. Ms. McGinnis? Just state your name and address, if I may.
Karen McGinnis, one oh-two Pennsylvania. And you, um, the council members, I just wanna make sure that you are aware of the section one hundred eight in the charter, which says that the submission of the budget and the budget message should be received on or before the tenth day of April in each year. That means the city manager should have submitted to you a budget estimate for the incoming fiscal year and an accompanying message. A copy of the submitted budget and budget message and all supporting schedules are to be filed in the office of the city clerk and via public record open to the public for inspection no later than ten days after the date of submission of the budget to the city council by the city manager. That means the budget should be ready for review this Friday, April twentieth. Secondly, from that, again, honorable members of the city council, I implore you to please not set up a new city manager failure. I cannot stress enough the importance of this impending budget. It will affect the city for years to come. I ask that you please have the courage to make the top decisions that need to be made. For example, exempt employees are not required to get raises, are not required to approve overtime and vacation days in companies in the private sector. It's time to really start to take a look at that. In addition, I ask that you consider changing auditors. Auditor, your auditors A, A, B, Z have been auditors since at least June two thousand thirteen, and at this point, I remind you, they have been helping you to close the books for this past, past fiscal year. Auditors are supposed to audit, they're not supposed to help close the books. So again, I implore you to hire new auditors, and that's up to you, not the city manager.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Ms. Orzado? Just state your name and address, if I may. Thank you.
Uh, the four million dollars from FEMA is, uh, the, so, who's expected in May? Uh, is that money gonna be used to pay back the bond?
That's different, different than...
This is a sample, an article, but like, so why are you bringing it up?
It's a different potential, right?
They owe us four million dollars, and you gotta pay away two point one million dollars.
That ain't nothing, it's not a bond, it's a note, and it took, did two separate streams altogether.
Okay, so the money was already paid, as we all have found out this evening, including the council. Why are we even having a meeting if it's already been passed? Why aren't the residents being made aware of all these things? And it's not on your website, I'm very active on Facebook, like you guys say, I'm social media. None of this, nobody here knew that everybody was paid outright. How are you guys gonna fix this? There's nothing said, moving forward, what? How are we gonna move forward? We can't even move forward. We're stuck. What's gonna be done here? And I agree with Mr. Bendo one hundred percent. And I appreciate that you did mention that the deficit and the burden of all this is gonna land on not just me, which is, I'm the lawyer of the homeowner, but my children. If we continue to keep piling up all this deficit, and the problem, the city is gonna go bankrupt. The council needs to be aware of everything that's going on. We can't come to council meetings and pull up lists or say, oh, well, how many people? We don't know, why is this, this one's getting paid that much? Nobody here on this council knows. There should be an itemized of every person, why they're getting the money. It's not just about Mr. Sherman, it's everyone on this. Mr. Sherman, we all know, Mr. Sherman's campaigning on our time. Look at all the social media. We all store it. Why is he being compensated? And the type is saying, oh, he doesn't sit a day off. We store it, we all store it with our own eyes. It should be reviewed, and as they said, if New York Rising took it back from us, then we'll be supposed to take it back, because it deserves it.
Thank you. Mr. James Kirkland? Just state your name and address, if I may.
Jim Kirkland, oh, this is your... Every, every meeting I come here, uh, it's always kind of interesting, fun, it's so entertaining to see your expressions, your responses, uh, in depth of discussions about things that are going on. What I always leave here with is, is the, the amazement that I don't think any of you have any appreciation or understanding or awareness of just how much you are disliked. Despite this two-week term, despise, even that's two-week term. You are literally hated by just about everybody I speak to and that lives in this city. And it's a terrible, terrible way to exist in life. To walk around knowing you're being hated, not because of who you are, but because of what you do. You ignore the people that come here from one time to the next. We never are told anything about what's going on until it's too late. And then we're told, if it's too late, well, we'll fix it next time, because there's never another next time. I moved into this city when it was so bad, people thought I was crazy to buy a home here. You were not permitted, not that you weren't permitted, you were advised by the police, don't go on the boardwalk at night. One morning I woke up, there was a dead body across my street. A week later, there was a dead body in the intersection of Penn and Riverside. And houses were being burnt down because there was a pyromaniac running around town who had to work for the volunteer fire department. Um, and so these are the kind of things that, that existed back then. But I had faith in this community, because the only people that were really doing anything that you might have looked down upon were the developers. But they were taking these old rundown places and fixing them up and selling them, making a good profit. But at least they were repairing them, and they weren't doing it, you know, to, to, to satisfy the needs of other people who they were working with. So it seems as though we're almost going around full tilt, we're at that point again, where now we're willing to auction off the city to the highest bidder for the sake of sharing in probably what is going to be the benefits of all this development. And I, and I think it's, it's sad, because it's almost like, you know, if it wasn't for what those original people did, we'd be living in Camden or Detroit, or parts of Baltimore, where you wouldn't even wanna walk or drive down the streets. So if you think you're, you know, you're living in this city, if you don't take care of it now, it's not gonna be worth living in when your children are ready to take your place. So I hope you keep that in the back of your mind, whatever you're doing is gonna come back to haunt you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nora Eaton?
Nora Eaton, uh, so, I have, I came up here for a reason, but first of all, I just need to, to, to... Mr. Ronald, I have a still stone that you said after I came up that council needs to meet on payouts and everything. You acted like this just came up tonight, five minutes before you sat down here.
We were all given that list, Monday, what did you get the list? Monday.
And you, well, you knew that there was a potential of payouts coming out at least minimum of two weeks ago.
It happens at the end of every fiscal year, pay, oh, not fiscal.
Right, and you can hear...
Every half-year payments go out, correct?
You can hear for numerous of these years. Um, I just, I witnessed the CSEA values leave, and they're the ones that are gonna be most hurt about this.
Correct.
They're my neighbors, they're my friends.
Which is why I voted against it.
But you, you put the onus on them and not, wait, in my mind, you did, by not taking the time, you knew since Monday, and not really taking the time to study this. And I understand and appreciate that you have another job and commitments, but you have a commitment to me as a taxpayer, to do your duty and read what's on the agenda. I'm done. So, my point was, for coming up here, we spent thirty thousand dollars on these planter containers thing. And there were something, I don't know what you know, but there was eyesore. So can you explain to me, why do we pay that? We're mid-April, and what is going on with them? Why do we continue to waste our money on things? Can we reach out to the chamber and maybe get a donation from them? Can we reach out to civics and maybe get a donation from each civic? Can we reach out to family members in their glossy flyer and ask the family to donate some flowers? I'm pretty up for a city. Anything?
Sure.
I'm asking you directly, as my president.
Yes, but I don't foresee us buying any flowers anytime soon.
So we're just gonna need these eyesores?
I don't know what's gonna happen, after not passing that bond, I don't know what's gonna happen.
But could you reach out to the chamber?
We have a great relationship with the chamber.
Did you reach out to the civics? But planting seeds in like now, I remember Nora just saying...
It all starts right about now, is that correct? Commissioner, right now is when planting the beach and everything starts to get going. We're gonna work on that, multiple trees, I think that...
But they actually planted, did you reach out to any of the civics, to the chamber, to families? Out of the city, in your glossy flyer? Did you reach out, oh, you would love this thirty thousand dollar planters to be something more than somebody leaving their shoe from the la, from last night's night action? Like, anything?
Did you even have to plant anything earlier than you ever did in the hospital?
Uh, no, actually, I planted them, I only are two weeks ago, they're fine. But I'm saying this, you reach out to the civics, or the chamber, or the residents for help. I understand that we have no money, but we reach out to the community and get some help. Just, two line paragraph in your reply, that's all I would have taken. Or one post on a Facebook page, that's it. The kids from school, anything, boys' camps, girls' camps, girls' camps, families, anybody? Just something here. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Long Beach?
I didn't really come up to talk about flowers, but since it's open now, I said instead of asking for donations from the community or anybody else, you should have asked people in the community if they wanted to spend thirty thousand dollars on those planters. They're seeing they take up too much room, and they've just been gross. Also, would you plant the flowers in the malls? How about some perennials, so we don't have to replace them year after year after year? What I really came up to say, though, was about this looking back at this extra money that was paid out. We use Jack as an example, he got about extra fifty thousand dollars. There's a list that Mr. Bendo held up, had ten or twenty people on it. If each, if each of those twenty people had a mistake of fifty thousand dollars in their favor, we wouldn't need any bonds. So I suggest, well, I saw a newspaper article recently where somebody accidentally, by their bank, had a million dollars put into their account. Do you think the bank ignored it and said, it's water under the bridge? I think they went back and said to the people, we made a mistake. And I think you should go back to Jack and go back to the payroll department, or whoever it was that's making this mistake, and hold people responsible for the job that they're doing. Somebody made a big mistake there by about fifty percent, and there are other people on that list, make their own mistakes. So please, I would like you to go back, write a letter to those people who owe us money, and say we made a mistake, send us a check. We need the money, even if it's for flowers. And go to payroll and find out who made these huge errors. I do remember, I think, if I'm correct, somebody didn't show up at a meeting once and we owe fifty million dollars, they weren't held responsible either. There needs to be some responsibility in this city. Thank you.
Miss Sashen, I just wanted to clarify something. That was, those money, you could write whatever letters you want, but they were reported as income to the IRS. So there is no mechanism for the city to get that money back.
It was all paid.
And even if there was a mistake, assuming, are you under that, there was a mistake made somewhere along the line? There is actually no, and I researched this point extensively, there's no mechanism.
Okay, you're a lawyer, you know better than I do, but I mean...
There's my response?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, I actually researched that point myself, and spoke to several CPAs, which, who, and all of them, it, it, once it's reported to the IRS, it's rated, there is no device to prove to the city.
Okay.
And also, the point is, just to clarify, this is the employee's, assuming no stage or gain. It, it's the employee's property also. The payout, payouts are the property of employees, it works the same for union employees and exempt employees. So it is their money.
Okay, so, it's their money because you gave it to them by mistake. Somebody made a mistake.
Well, you're assuming it was a mistake, it's been in the council.
I just heard it was, yes. And if somebody's only allowed fifty days a year of pay? I think it should be looked into, and I think somebody should be held responsible, because that's a lot of money. And I think if it's happening in one spot, it's happening all over the place. I mentioned fifty million dollars?
Thank you. Ms. Delory? Please state your name and address, if I may.
Hi, Delory Long Beach. Um, just one, two questions for council. When I was presented to the council to sign off, whether they're abstracts, bills, payments, or is that procedure done? In other words, at, I'm trying to say control, but usually people have to, uh, sign off, pay review, some kind of payment, whether it's a sheet, whether it's a summary of, of payments listed to vendor, any amount. Do you know if those items that are in question now were submitted to, I think these payouts occurred in December, January, or February? So an elected official that's at office in January may not have been attended at that meeting, but the other council members should have been aware. This is my problem. And the people here in the audience understand it real well. If, let's say you did work, and you, your house is being constructed, and all of a sudden, the contractor removes your stairs and says, ah, you can't get in here until you give me the final payment. That's kinda like holding a gun to your head. I think the questions that Councilman Bendo asked, Councilwoman Moore addressed, it goes to a much bigger, bigger picture right now, is, I don't think you guys are working together as a team. And that causes me problems, because whether you agree with each other or not, you're serving people here and everybody else. We want you to make the right decisions, because you all live here. So, uh, my question, council, is this. Was the list presented to these council members at the time that the disbursements were made?
No.
No.
Well, here's my question, was it presented to any council member?
No.
Who's running the show?
Just to answer your question, also, Ms. Delory, did?
No, no, nobody's for it.
On the city council, that's correct. I think you asked a question about internal procedure also, and I can answer that. The way payouts are generated is, um, a voucher submitted, payroll supervisor then calculates the payout. It's signed off by the controller, and ultimately the city management, where the payout appears. And that's the internal procedure. That's the current procedure.
I would suggest...
And this is what you're going to say, is what I was talking about earlier, going forward, there should be a different mechanism.
Uh, there's a lot of items that I could mention as improvements areas, but... One is trust, which we, you will earn it down the road. The other is have a list of items that is planned to be expended.
Just a summary list.
Yeah. You have a computerized, not even to be given to you. So, you look at it and you sign off on it, or you, you ask a question and then it's held until you get your answer. That's a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dugan.
Uh, next question. Um, tonight, I actually got to the boardwalk last week or so, and I noticed that there were four jetties that were not done. Um, there's something I downloaded from Army Corps, there's supposed to be eighteen jetties that are done. I don't know how many were done in the West End, but there were four, it's from, from Neptune Boulevard, Neptune Boulevard, Long Beach, Anatolia, and Lafayette, the four that were not done. Is that part of the plan? Is that, why, why were four jetties not done?
My understanding is that they're deemed not necessary to provide the protection that the jetties provide us with.
If I could ask...
Why don't we have a commissioner come up and talk about it?
When the Army Corps originally developed the plan, I believe it was in the eighties?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Nineteen eighty-six. They did an evaluation of the jetty's condition at that time. At that time, they determined some of the jetties did not need to be redone. The idea being the plan would have been done at that time.
Right.
Then the plan went and sat on a shelf for thirty years. The problem is, the plan that was approved in eighty-six is the one that has to be implemented. Otherwise, the Army Corps has to go back to Congress and start the process all over. So, they had to follow the plan that was approved in eighty-six, and that did not include rehabilitating all the jetties. The jetty on my block was not done either.
Your...
I'm on Maryland.
Maryland.
And my jetty was not done either. Um, you know, it was a little bit of an eyesore, I guess compared to the nicest ones we got.
Yeah, it's like that, I mean, I haven't been on the boardwalk, it was a high tide, and actually the jetties that were not done, you don't even see the jetties. You see, you see the new jetties, and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is capricious, they're saying protect the beaches, and now you're going to have these gaps that are not going to be protected.
Well, you'll see even less of them when they elevate the beach, when they put the sand on the beach.
Right.
So, but the new jetties are performing their function. But again, they implemented a plan from nineteen eighty-six, and nineteen eighty-six, those jetties didn't need to be redone.
They couldn't, they couldn't, they didn't rise or anything.
Yeah. I really... I know, so that requires them to go back to Congress and file.
Uh, okay.
It was a question that we, we all had asked, um, a number of times, and as the project continued to be completed, we, and we saw, anything that we saw, any question and concern, that we had to re-lead or ask the commissioner for the Army Corps, we received a very familiar answer, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay. It just seems, again, I was used to seeing everything up there, you can probably winter, you know, the very machinery and stuff, and pretty cool watching that stuff, and then also there's nothing there. And they're written in the flyer, they came out saying that everything's done. It's just like, it looks like everything's done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Mr. Camden.
Steve Camden, Tenth West Beach Street. Thank you very much for the long evening work you guys always put in. I really appreciate that. Um, on the comprehensive plan, which will come out eventually, the council makes sure we don't run the same problem of not having the trust we need to get things done the way the town wants it done. We've done a lot of work the last few years to come up with a comprehensive plan that, you know, is important to get to our city. So, therefore, I've been trying hard to work with them the last few years to make sure that the town buys in, that the town owns it with us, so we all wants it together. And it really has not gotten that level yet, a shame. We've done, you know, I know they've worked very hard, eighteen public meetings, there can be a bunch of stuff to say, it's been done, but my fear is the heart's not behind it still. I'm trying to help get that done. I think if each one of you appoint three people that you want, that's fifteen people, and we just do one month of a meeting, week after week, and investigating between the fifteen people you guys trust, so you guys can own it too, that would be a big help. So, when you come up here to vote on something in the first public meeting, it's not what's been happening. I've been involved for three years. I'm scared this will be passed without the conviction of the town. That's scary, okay? A comprehensive plan is vital to everything we're going to do. So, please, let, help us own it with the community, okay? That's the vital part of this whole thing. Without this, I was the one before this in '07, and it sat on the shelf because we didn't own it. I worked hard, but we had so many managers going through at the time, there was never a city council that bought in. This plan was put together by Jack and a few people there, it scares me. I like the people who are working, I'm not against people who worked hard to do this. But my fear is because of the trust issue, we're going to fall apart again without the proper pay. Okay, so, please, help us own this together. Thank you.
Mr. Camden, quickly, um, just can you just specifically just elaborate a little bit with respect to what you're asking the council to do?
Sure.
We have had meetings, and obviously, I've attended a lot of the meetings, you were there, um, the community's input is paramount in terms of what we do. So, are you asking for a different meeting, a different type of outreach?
We have this committee, there's a committee group that's formed as part of this, I've been part of it the whole three years. It's been very poorly activated amongst the committee of people. You see, in the comprehensive plan, there's a sheet, and people are on it, okay? I think, you know, there's very, one meeting, two meetings, there have been about six meetings of us, but it's very poorly worked on between us. I don't feel any community within the six, I guess thirty people on that page. I don't feel any commitment amongst us. So, if, at least, let's say another month, okay, where you guys each name your own three that you trust to be in this room, listening, debating, fighting for this, and have an honest debate, like that amongst the people who really are understanding the subject. You know, that'd be great. You know how hard it is when people come here, and I'm working curve, they don't understand, we could talk about that, they're just good-hearted people. Do you know that working curve, how frustrating this is? So, if you get the fifteen people that know what's going on together for one month, every week we're talking, that way, when we pull this public meeting, you have a real sense of comprehensive plan internally, like not just you, but the three people you trust.
So, you're referring to the advisory board?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, because it wasn't clear if you were thinking...
Thank you, the community advisory board.
Thanks.
That would be sensitive.
Thank you, your turn.
Thank you, Camden.
Mr. Dussel.
Hi, good evening, guest Jake goes to Long Beach. Uh, I'd just like to commend council members, Vendo and Moore, for their courage in voting the way that they did on that bond issue tonight. No doubt it will face some repercussions. You guys have already tried to point the finger at them and blame them for the pain they anticipate resulting from the failure that passed this bond. But I would submit that that pain is your responsibility. Your responsibility, meaning Mr. Mandell, Mr. Rahm, and Mr. Diamond, the three of you guys, basically excluded Ms. Moore, and more recently, Mr. Vendo, in the equal participation in governing profit. So, for them, you get a pass on this. You guys, if there's anything to point to be done, it's you. Now, in terms of things that could sort of blunt this, um, Mr. Agres B C said some of these payments, I think Mr. Vendo said fourteen of the recipients of these funds are exempt. Now, the exempts, I know that their compensation or their payouts somehow got this as the A contract, but Mr. Agres B C said that the basis for those payments is the city code. City code is silent on any requirement that they pay within a certain amount of time. So, if these exempt employees ask for a paydown, the city wasn't obligated to do it. If these exempt employees leave in their own X amount of dollars in time, they don't have the right under the charter or code to demand immediate payment. So, I don't have any right to demand that, uh, flow this money. So, assuming that they don't have that right, that means that somebody made a conscious decision to fulfill their request for this money. So, that's the person who really, you talked about two point one million, it's already spent, we have a bond now, that person, and I assume that person is Jack, that's the culprit, that's the guy to deal with. But since we're in belt hanging mode, um, maybe we should think about not sending that five thousand dollar loss amount. This, this talk of layoffs, police, hourways, I believe these references around, there are only employees who make a lot of money who do nothing. There were a couple I can think of right off the bat who sat and created fake Facebook pages while on city time, or it's a test, and they're paying. Those guys sitting there playing on Facebook, making fake pages, they clearly don't have much to do. So, you might want to consider trimming that as well. That would be fifty four million that I've been about to keep denied or waived. It's also come to my attention that several of the concessionaires on the boardwalk haven't paid their rent in quite some time. How about we go after those guys and get the rent money that the city that half pays for before we start renting out farming? And in terms of Mr. Tack's claim that Mr. Sheen never took his time, that guy was campaigning for about a year straight before he separated from service. He was in every city hall except for his meetings here. You're telling me he wasn't, he was, I did, I asked you guys once, you sort of, he burned his vacation time, he's out there paying. So, which is, was he on vacation or wasn't he? I don't know.
Mr. Camden.
I just want to touch up against Mr. Pendle comes forward. First of all, I think it's very important for everyone here to understand that this is a team. I know that you've heard several accounts, newspaper accounts, social media accounts, we do work as a team. I want to make that clear. And we have to understand one key thing, that we can agree to disagree, okay? That's, that's what, that's what a team is about. There are times when we have to make hard decisions and we're not going to agree, but that doesn't mean that we're, that we're not a team. And everyone that's here, this day is here, is still worthy of respect because they hold the office. So, let's, let's be clear about that. Second of all, this is really about accountability, all right? Um, in terms of what happened today, yes, it's a shame what happened today, all right? It was very painful what happened today. And I'm sure everyone here, everybody's disappointed about what happened today, all right? Having said that, right, this is about the fact that we're not trying to punish members of the police force, members of the fire department, or members of the CSEA. But we have a responsibility today, and that is to make sure that this information is out in the open. This is about transparency. Do we still need to fix it? Yes. Are we going to get together and fix it? Yes. I, I can openly say that with confidence that, yes, we will do that. But in the meantime, we still have a responsibility to make sure that this information is out to you, so that you understand why we're making the decisions that we're making. Second of all, third of all, accountability, all right? When, when I was elected and I started, day one in 2016, I worked with this team, and one of the first things we did, because obviously at that particular time, the person in, in conversation, a former city manager, he was moving forward with a new contract. I worked with every member of this team with exception of Councilman, well, two people who were, who were new to the council. At that particular time, he worked to draft what we considered to be an evaluation for our city manager. I worked with this team to draft that because I asked for an evaluation. The evaluation was included with that city manager's contract. However, that evaluation was never extended or never in any way implemented during that period of time. So, having said that, we have to go back again and look at all of these things. Accountability is critical. Maybe, just maybe, if that evaluation was used back in 2016 or 2017, maybe we wouldn't be where we are right now. But having said that, now, we can't change that, we have to move forward. But it's important for all of us to understand and to share with all of the other residents that accountability right now unfortunately has caused what's happening today. And so, we're going to have to, and that's why we're calling, I'm calling for, so that we can change that. Can we fix that tonight? No, we can't fix that tonight. But at least we can, at least begin that dialogue so that we can become healthy and whole. And that's really what I believe everyone on here wants us to be, they want us to be healthy and whole, regardless of the decision that was made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dussel.
Good evening, Captain into Long Beach. Real quickly, um, so, I have to agree with Ms. Moore on this. It's about accountability, it's about transparency, but it's more about the lack thereof, and it's also the communication issue. We have a lot to do together, and I think that you also can't go and, and blame the fiscal challenges of what's going on right now, like there's pending layoffs or, or things like that, because last week before this was voted down, there was already talk of twenty-five percent tax increase. There's already the talk of layoffs, there's already a cut, talk of, uh, cut services. So, to try to point it out to, um, this bond getting voted down, and I'm, listen, I'm a city worker, I would probably feel the pain as well, it's, it's not the right thing to do, because prior to this, bond being voted down, there was already talk of a twenty-five percent tax increase, there was already the talk of, the budget not even being presented, I mean, we don't even have a city manager right now. We don't have a full-time city manager, I'm sorry, a full-time permanent city manager. We don't have a comptroller. So, you really can't push all the pain of this event on this bond, cities and banks bonds. Um, it's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of honest, transparent communication. Um, and two things that I noticed is that a lot of this was shot or, or new, the union contracts have been written out, there's really no supplies in these union contracts. The only thing that seemed very uncertain was the system for payout for these exempt employees upon their separation. That seems to be the big question. So, don't go blaming, I'm not saying it should be specifically you're doing that, the, the union contracts, so those have been negotiated over the years, the council's been part of that, the labor unions have been part of that. The real question is the uncertainty of these exempt positions and their expeditious payouts. Um, one more thing I wanted to notice today, because I did get brought up, and I noticed two great things in our city that will go unnoticed because tragedy was averted. First of all, I want to give a big shout out to the CSEA workforce, who are in the middle of the night, the early morning, fixing and repairing, uh, fire pipe, the pipeline underground, which is no easy task, to help ensure that we have safe water, uninterrupted in case of the eventual fire, uh, for a big part of our community, which many people may not know what happened. They did a great job, and I want to commend them on that. The second thing is I want to commend Fire Department, because we have a fire tonight, and this building is still standing, it's in great condition. And because of that, the train, the efficient, uh, system that we had, when people came in and put it fired up before it got bad. So, two things that people are not screaming, crying about right now is no fire pipe, it's a building burning down, and that can go unnoticed. So, before you go in and want to cut services, remember that we still have to deliver public service, and don't go against the police, the fire, the part-time workers, and the CSEA, because they deliver a very, very valuable service to the community. Thank you.
That's it from City News. Thank you, and get home safe.